Good evening. Welcome to the March 24th, 2025 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not sure I actually called the meeting to order before the Pledge of Allegiance, but I'll actually call the meeting to order. A little out of order, but we are now in session. This time, I have proclamations and presentations. We'll start with the Order of DeMolay. I'm not sure if I have a representative here from them. So what we might do is hold on to that one, and we'll make sure we do it when we've got a rep here. The second one is for Flood Awareness Month. Whereas historically, the greatest number of flood disasters in Oklahoma occurred during the spring season, and whereas flooding causes billions of dollars in property damage and numerous deaths each year in the United States, and losses due to flooding are not covered under most homeowners or business insurance policies, and whereas it's never safe to drive into floodwaters, residents must be prepared for flood safety procedures. And whereas the city of Stillwater is a participating community in the National Flood Insurance Program, which is required to regulate floodplain development in partnership with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, Oklahoma Insurance Department, Federal Emergency Management Agency, Oklahoma Emergency Management, Stillwater Emergency Management Agency, the Oklahoma Municipal League, the Oklahoma Legislature, the Association of County Commissioners, the Oklahoma Emergency Managers Association, and the Oklahoma Floodplain Managers Association to promote the beneficial use and natural functions of the floodplain. And whereas the NFIP allows residents of participating communities to purchase affordable flood insurance in exchange for regulating floodplain development. And whereas it's important to promote the timely purchase of flood insurance in advance of Oklahoma's spring flooding season, as flood insurance policies generally require a 30-day waiting period. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Flood Awareness Month in the City of Stillwater. Zach, do you have a few words to tell us?
Thank you for entertaining this proclamation tonight. I know that a good soaking rain is probably a welcome thought this time of year. We typically do this proclamation in May, which is a usual month-time period whenever we receive most of our rainfall. But the state, as well as Stillwater, kind of wanted to push this a little forward and start the awareness process a little sooner. Like the proclamation says, there's usually a 30-day waiting period for any new flood insurance policies. So we want to make sure that we give people plenty of lead time to try to get any of that information in place before we get those rains. Of course, you don't have to be in a floodplain to have damage caused by floods and flash flooding. It's estimated that 30% of the claims for NFIP in Oklahoma occurred outside of mapped flood zones. So it's very important to understand your risk and your localized topography to make sure that you're aware of the drainage patterns in your area and what you can do as a homeowner to protect yourself. And with that, I'll get out of your hair and let you guys get some more pressing business.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Zach? All right, next up, Megan Brazel from Prairie Arts is here to talk to us a little bit about the OSU art students and the Chris Salmon Plaza mural project.
Good evening, councilors. And I am getting the great honor of introducing these students who are going to be joining us in just a minute.
Can you pull the...
Pull this down.
Thank you.
And so I just want to take a moment to explain the project. This is our third year in doing this. We've brought each of the presentations. We've had, this is the visual thinking class from the art department. There's two sections of it. And so we have four students who are going to give you some presentations. And I'm going to let Marika and Elena come over and explain what our theme was this year.
Yeah, so my name is Marika Christofides.
And my name is Elena Masru.
Yeah, and we are the two professors who taught the project this year. This year's theme is Stillwater Foodways. And foodways is kind of a broad term that encompasses the cultural, social, and economic practices surrounding food. So everything from like traditional recipes to current agricultural practices. So for this project, Elena and I both had our students research Oklahoma food history, as well as important local institutions like the Stillwater Farmers Market, Our Daily Bread, and the OSU Student Farm. And after that, they went through kind of an iterative design process to come up with the designs that you're going to see today. We felt like our students did a really outstanding job this year, which is why we have four designs to present to you. So yeah, I'll present our students, who are Olive Price, Mars Mohica, Molly Maxson, and Katie Reynolds.
Hi, my name's Olive Price, and I'm a freshman here at OSU. The title of my mural is Roots and Recipes. I want to take a moment to talk about the inspiration behind this mural and how it represents Stillwater's foodways, the history, the culture, and the community. Every detail in this design was chosen to reflect the connection between the people of Stillwater and the food that brings us together. One of the most important elements in the mural is the swirling patterns. I wanted the swirls to symbolize the roots of local food traditions, how food connects us to our past, and how it helps us shape our future. But they also represent something else: the wind. If you've spent any time in Oklahoma, you know how the wind is always present, moving through our daily lives. Just like the wind, the traditions and flavors of Stillwater's foodways have traveled through generations, blending old and new influences. And I wanted to portray that in my design. The mural also features key produce, such as wheat, tomatoes, and peppers, crops that are commonly grown in this region. I wanted to incorporate these and to represent the importance of agriculture in Stillwater, reminding us that much of our food comes from the hardworking farmers who dedicate their lives to growing it. Alongside the produce, you'll see utensils. I use different utensils to symbolize the recipes and cultures that have shaped Stillwater's food scene. I wanted to express the food in a way of sharing history in that brings people together with abstracted apron, whisk, spatula, and rolling pins. Stillwater is unique because it is a college town. People come here from all over, each bringing their own backgrounds and food traditions. I wanted this to be expressed in my design by adding the street signs. The street signs aren't just random locations. They represent key places in our community: the Farmers Market and Our Daily Bread. When doing research for my design, the Farmers Market and Our Daily Bread stuck with me the most. These locations are the heart of Stillwater's foodways, showing the strong bond between the local food and community support. I placed these street signs as one of the focal points of the mural to truly get across the significant impact that these organizations have had on Stillwater and other surrounding communities. When you look at this mural, I hope you see more than the images on the surface. I hope you see the deeper story it tells. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mars Mohica, and my mural is titled Heart of the Community. My interpretation of Stillwater foodways was focused on the community and the way the area's agricultural history has shaped the thriving diversity of Stillwater. During my research, I learned about Stillwater's ties to many Native American tribes and the significant contributions to agriculture that Native American culture has added. And I wanted to honor that with a subtle pattern in the back of my design, featuring many diamonds, kind of inspired by Native American art. Additionally, I have flowing lines out from the center to represent the different ways and paths that agricultural knowledge is passed on through time. Featured in the center of my design is a large carrot. Carrots are a really common crop in Oklahoma because of the rich fertile soil. And it's also a good recognizable symbol of agriculture and farming. As you can see on the bottom, the stylized lines extend behind and in front of the human figures to represent that farming is a staple of generations past, present, and future. I really wanted to showcase Stillwater's strong community in my design. And I did that through stylized, abstract human figures to show unity and reference urban art to reflect the city aspects of Stillwater, along with Stillwater's rural areas. In my research, I found this really inspiring quote from Our Daily Bread that said, "Instead of continuing to do a little bit separately, they believed they could do more together." And I feel like it's really important to highlight those group effort communities like Our Daily Bread, the Student Farm, and the Farmers Market because of the positive impacts they have on the community. And to represent that, I have the figures arranged in the circle, lifting up the pattern in the middle, representing the power of collective action and the strength in community. Standing out in the center is a pattern of produce. I wanted it to stand out because I feel like the true heart of our community is agriculture, food, and produce, and the farmers that grow it. And I wanted to represent it in a way that really stood out. So I used distinct abstract shapes and vibrant colors to represent that. I believe my design would be a positive addition to the current lineup of murals and represent the positive aspects of Stillwater and the impact of agriculture and food on our community. With that being said, thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Molly Maxson, and my design is the Cowboy Cabbage. For my mural design, I wanted to represent the importance of local produce.
Hold on one second, let's get your picture up. There we go.
There it is, okay. Hello, my name is Molly Maxson, and my design is the Cowboy Cabbage. For my mural design, I wanted to represent the importance of local produce from the Stillwater Farmers Market. The market is incredibly important to those who participate and provides a place for residents of Stillwater to interact with each other and stay involved in their community. The reasoning behind the cabbage plant is that that was actually the first vegetable I ever grew on my own through a program called Bonnie Plants Cabbage Program. Each year, this program sends more than 1 million free cabbage plants to third-grade classrooms all over the country. This program taught me how tedious it is caring for one crop, and I tried my hardest to grow the best cabbage that I could. In the end, I didn't win the scholarship, but I did gain experience in gardening, and it made me appreciate the farmers who take care of thousands of crops at one time. Once I came up with the cabbage design, I got to thinking, since it's technically called a cabbage head, why couldn't I have a hat? I chose to draw cowboy hats resting on the cabbage heads to represent the hard work and dedication of the farmers who are behind it all. Farming requires immense physical labor around the clock and is admirable. They often work from dawn until dusk, caring for their crops and livestock. Farmers and their knowledge is vital for producing high-quality food consistently. And I wanted part of my design to represent the importance of having great local farmers. I think it makes the cabbage stand out, and maybe it will encourage children who see the mural to eat their veggies if they associate them with something silly and fun. And for the sun, I imagined a huge tomato slice would be perfect, and I surrounded it with little carrots for a more abstract perspective. Making it entirely out of vegetables also represents how vital local produce is for good health, like the sun. I also included a sign to ground the design in a specific place: Duck Street, which is where the Stillwater Foods Market is located. And thank you for the opportunity to present my design.
Hello, my name is Katie Reynolds, and this is my design titled Stilly Fresh. My design, I wanted to celebrate all of Stillwater's rich foodways by showcasing the vibrant and locally grown produce that is available at the Stillwater Farmers Market and Our Daily Bread, which serves the community with free produce grown at the OSU Student Farm. My goal with this design is to highlight the abundance of fresh seasonal ingredients with elements of Oklahoma's natural beauty and paying tribute to the land and the farmers who cultivate it. So obviously, the Farmers Market sells fresh fruits and vegetables, but they also, in my research, I found that they sell flowers. I wanted to include the flower aspect into the focal point in my design, which is supposed to represent a native Oklahoma plant, the Indian blanket flower. Within the flower, on the red section, there is the Oklahoma State Fruit, which is the strawberry, and other various red fruits, like the tomatoes, watermelons, and raspberries. These thrive in the region and are also popular market staples. Moving further to the end of the petals, it transitions into a yellow honeycomb with little honeybees surrounding, which is the state insect as well. This is supposed to represent the importance of natural pollinators and the natural cycle of growth. Moving further up into my design, I included another native plant, which is the blue false indigo. And off the petals are cascading little blueberries. This brings in cooler tones into the palette, but also mimics the way the blueberries grow in nature. And it also balances the composition and contributes to the overall theme of fresh fruit and abundance. Moving down back to the cantaloupes, which is a popular Farmers Market staple in the summertime, it continues the balance of the orange bell peppers within the petals and moves it further up into the page. Lastly, at the top of my design are large watermelons to complement the green accents within the petals and with the stems and the leaves and the rinds. Through this mural, I wanted to inspire the Stillwater community to embrace local fresh fruit and appreciate the hard work of our farmers. By supporting local food systems, we not only nourish ourselves, but also strengthen the connection to the land and the people who cultivate it. Thank you for considering my mural.
Thank you.
Well, I thank you guys for giving everybody your time. Please let us know, give us any feedback that you have. It's really special to have this one, in particular with the foodways, because the Stillwater Farmers Market does... It's homed at the Prairie Arts Center, so they're there on Saturdays and Wednesdays. So come and check them out.
Thank you so much. Just as a reminder, we generally give them feedback informally later. We're not going to have a vote or anything to pick one of those. Those are all great, just fantastic stuff. I love this project so much. I think Chris Salmon Plaza is so much nicer and more vibrant with these murals up. And it's going to be tough to pick one of those four, I'm sure. So thank you all for being here. Did we? Did we have a representative from DeMolay here?
Sorry.
No? Okay, we're going to move on to item four on the agenda, which is the Consent Docket. Councilors, questions, comments? I think actually, City Attorney had a comment on one of the consent dockets.
Yes, Mayor, one comment. Item A on the Consent Docket, the proposed meeting minutes from the March 10th meeting. We did notice there was an error under number seven, Public Hearings, that stated that Mayor Joyce opened and closed the public hearing. Mayor Joyce was absent that meeting, so we've just corrected that to show that it was my mayor that opened and closed the public hearings. This has been corrected, and the correct version is uploaded to the Agenda Packet, and it's available online.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or action on the Consent Docket?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent Docket's approved with a vote of five to zero. Takes us to Public Hearings, 7A. Receive public comment regarding a request from Lambert Properties LLC and CSCM Properties LLC for a map amendment, MA 25-1, to rezone from two-family and multifamily RTM and two-family residential RT to all two-family, excuse, two-family and multifamily RTM district for the properties addressed as 814, 816, 818, 820 North Lincoln Street, and 822 and 824 North Lincoln Street, and 1102, 1104, 1106, 1108, and 1110 West Tyler Avenue. This is CC-25-54. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
You're up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm Josh Brown. I'm here to present this map amendment on behalf of Development Services. As you mentioned, this is... There are several addresses here: 814, 816, 818, and 820 North Lincoln Street, 822 and 824 North Lincoln Street, and 1102, 1104, 1106, 1108, and 1110 West Tyler Avenue. The request is to rezone from two-family residential and two-family and multifamily residential to only two-family and multifamily residential. Here's an area map. All those addresses are located on three lots, which is highlighted by the pink polygon here. They do have frontage on Lincoln Street, and then that turns into West Tyler Avenue. This is an aerial view. Oklahoma State University is located directly to the west, and then again to the south across McElroy. And O'Brady Stadium is in the area to the east, across Washington Street. This is a street view, showing the North Lincoln Street properties on the left and the West Tyler Avenue properties on the right. This is a zoning map. University zoning is located to the west. Large lot, single-family residential is to the north. And it is kind of hard to differentiate the zonings. The RTM is kind of more the orange color, if you can tell that. And the northernmost lot is already half-zone RTM. So the request is to bring all that into RTM zoning, which is the two-family and multifamily residential. RT does continue along Tyler to the north. This is the future land use map. This was adopted with the current comprehensive plan and is used to predict future land uses. The comprehensive plan in this area calls for low-density residential. And Erin Ferguson with Bancroft Design is here to speak on behalf of the applicants. Do you guys have any questions for staff?
Councilors, any questions? Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If we have a representative from the applicant.
Hello, Erin Ferguson with Bancroft Design at 923 South Lowry. Staff covered it very well. We're just proposing to rezone all the properties to have consistent zoning across them all. There's RTM surrounding it all, so it fits in with the neighborhood. At this time, my understanding is there's no specific purpose, but the owners wish to sell the property and want to rezone it before then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there... I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Is anybody here planning to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask staff to come back up and let us know what the Planning Commission's recommendation was.
Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Josh. Councilors?
I move to approve the Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation. Please vote. That's approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to item eight on the agenda, General Orders. Discussion and Update Regarding the Response and Recovery Efforts Related to the Current State of Emergency for the March 14th Wildfire and Severe Weather Disaster. And to kick us off tonight, Fire Chief Terry Essery will give us an update on current status.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilors, I am Terry Essery, I'm Stillwater Fire Chief. On the afternoon of March 14th, our community experienced historic fire weather, which culminated in the worst fire condition Stillwater Fire Department has ever experienced. I am proud to say that no lives were lost during this disaster. No serious injuries were reported. We did have five firefighters that were treated and released very quickly after being treated, and they're back to full duty. In a 12-hour period, from noon to midnight on March 14th, Stillwater Fire Department received approximately 300 calls for service. To put that into context, in those 12 hours, we received more calls for help than we would normally encounter in a 30-day period. Not just calls, but calls that involved active fire. We normally have approximately 10 large structure fires a year, and on March 14th, we were challenged with a volume that would normally occur over the course of more than eight months. Over eight ye... Correct, I'm going to correct myself, eight years. Over eight years' worth of structure fires occurred in a 12-hour time period. We lost a total of 98 homes in southwest Stillwater, and there were an additional 123 homes impacted by the fire. We received mutual aid from 11 fire departments and two county task forces. We continued to find hotspots and flare-ups through Wednesday, March 19th. No fire apparatus was lost, and we did not suffer any major damage to equipment. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Emergency Management Director, Rob Hill.
Good evening. Just kind of help you set this day up. For the week ahead of the 14th, we knew that Friday was going to be a potential bad day for us. This is a mezzanine site that we use that shows Stillwater and Perkins. And as you can see, the relative humidity at the time of 4:20 in the afternoon was 12%. Winds were out of the southwest at 31, with gusts of 46 miles per hour, and the fire danger was severe category. Also, at the same time, we received from the National Weather Service, satellite-detected wildfires. As you can see, those black areas that are in Payne County and that cross-hatched area there were reaching historical weather fire conditions. Wind gusts from around the state of Oklahoma in Frederick was 83, all the way to Stillwater at 69 miles per hour. In addition, with sustained winds at 55. This is the cross-hatched area of the total burn. This was collected using forestry flying this fire for us, plus windshield driving it, and then also using a drone. As you can see, we had 26,301 acres that were consumed during this fire. And that's from McElroy to 80th Avenue, from Highway 86 to Western Avenue, to give you an idea of the scope. Most of the fires were in vegetation much like this, very heavy dense woods, a lot of leaf litter, a lot of old cedar trees that had been either cut or eradicated from the property, new cedar trees that were in growth, but not drivable, couldn't get to them with a truck. Hand crews are all that we had available to us, and that wasn't an option just due to the extreme danger and the extreme conditions and the volatility of the fire and the fire line. This is a picture from Sunday afternoon. Forestry was called, we called in state assets, and they sent us two bulldozers and two brush trucks and a command crew to come in and cut a fire line around this fire. It maintained the fire for a couple days, but we ended up going back a couple of times to this fire to have to deal with it as it slowly burned out. The reason super scoopers and tankers wouldn't work is because of the types of conditions, the depth of the leaf litter and stuff on the ground. They said that they could make multiple flights, dump multiple gallons of water on this, and it would never put it out completely. So it was just going to have to burn itself out. At the same time that we were dealing with these fires in the southwest part of Stillwater, the areas with the most impact were going to be Pecan Hill, Hidden Oaks, Nottingham, and the Crosswinds addition. And those are highlighted here with the little red dots on the images. This is a combination, what you're looking at here, of impacted, completely destroyed. Some of those could be wind damage, but most of those are fire-related damages. As a result of the fire on the southwest part of town and within the county, we had to do mandatory evacuations, which is not something we do very often in this community. And that required us to go door-to-door. Sometimes we could go door-to-door, knock on the door, get a resident to come to the door. Sometimes it was as quick and as fast as driving up and down the streets, blowing the sirens on the police cars and fire trucks, and making announcements on the public address system. Lake Carl Blackwell also was impacted heavily. Fox Run, Stillwater Boat Club, Blackjack Cove, and Deer Run, where they lost 74 campers altogether in these two campsites. Assessments. Assessments began on the 15th, basically with a windshield assessment, coordinated with Sergeant Johnson. Stillwater Police Department had officers go to each and every neighborhood that we knew was impacted or had been impacted, and basically they did a windshield drive-through survey. That's where we come up with our initial number of 74 and 11. 74 destroyed, 11 impacted. Then on the 16th, FEMA, the Small Business Administration, the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management, and the American Red Cross conducted their surveys. And the dots that you see on the map are interactive with our ArcGIS, so that as they update and increase those numbers, our numbers increase. And as the footprint of this fire increases, our footprint increases. So we see it in real time, and that is thanks to IT. Disaster declarations, federal and local. Both Stillwater issued a state of emergency, which allowed us to file to the state. And the state declared for a disaster declaration on the 21st of this month. As a result of that, it goes to FEMA, FEMA Region 6. They review it, they send it to FEMA National. FEMA sends it up to the president's office, and then we await to hear back. But we have reached thresholds in the state for individual ass... But we have reached, we have reached thresholds in the state for individual assessment, or individual assistance. And then, once that's done, additional counties will be added, so any contiguous county that butts up next to Payne County or other counties that were impacted by wildfire will be added as a result, so that those people will be able to receive assistance as well. A Fire Management Assistance Grant, or an F-MAG as we call it, has been approved for our fire, and the paperwork is underway, and is, and the Fire Department is working on that now. Since then, State-County Boads or volunteer associations active in disasters held the first MARC, which is Multi-Agency Resource Center, at the First United Methodist Church and Family Life Center on Saturday. The first one was in Manford on Friday, ours was on Saturday, and then Guthrie and Little Axe will be to follow. We had 60 people come into that facility and leave with resource assistance of some kind. There were only a handful of people that attended that did not have insurance that will benefit greatly from the FEMA assistance and the Small Business Administration. Also, as you guys know, we have been very strong in the relief efforts, right? This was headed up with staff and Vice Mayor Jalowski setting this up, and then collecting, taking donations and setting this up in the Armory. And this is a very early-on picture. When we were there Saturday, three-quarters of the gymnasium was taken up with supplies, and I saw many of you there, so you know. I was informed today that we are back to half-gym so that we can resume some of our activities in the gym. But we are very grateful to parks and community resources for the use of the gym, because this is a wonderful asset to have. As a result of Dawn's team and her creative thinking and her efforts, a dedicated page was created. And so if you ever ha, if we ever have an emergency of magnitude again, you can go to stillwaterok.gov/emergency, and whatever the disaster is, that link will relate to. So, like Zach was here earlier, talking about flooding in May and rains in May, well, if we have a flood in May, knock on wood, that doesn't happen, but if we have one, it would go to this flooding page, or tornado page, or whatever it may be. And this will remain from now on as a result of a meeting that we had with admin. Also, I think it's very important that during this crisis, our alerting and communications was vital to the community. I shared this with staff, and I, I still am at awe with this, but, you know, when we go to the fire, and we were standing there, working in a unified command capacity, working with fire, working with law enforcement, working with emergency management, Dawn and her team are standing right, well, Dawn, Friday night for sure, was standing there, right there beside us, and any message and anything that came up that needed to be shared with the community was either texted out to the right people or put on social media. And I just wanted to point out, this says in 28 days, but I promise you, I look at these numbers regularly, and then in 28 days, we did not have these kind of numbers. These numbers were generated in a 12 to 24-hour period for 5.1 million views on the same as social media Facebook page, and then we had 41,000-plus interactions that were taking place while this event was happening. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren Smith.
Good evening, Counselors. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. Our issue started at 2:16 PM when we experienced a partial transmission loop outage due to high winds, which de-energized three of our six distribution substations, affecting approximately 10,832 customers. One oper, operations were able to remotely close breakers to re-energize two substations, restoring the majority of our customers within approximately five minutes. Staff had to mobilize to the third substation to manually close switches, restoring most of the rest within 47 minutes. Staff then began to focus on two open distribution breakers that were affecting approximately 1,163 customers. The last of the two breakers were closed at 4:22. After that, staff continued working to restore the remaining 230 or so customers. At 12:27 AM Saturday morning, all customers were restored that could be. Distribution crews worked throughout the weekend, changing out poles and repairing damaged infrastructure, and that work continues this week. Distribution infrastructure that was replaced, 17 poles, three by fire, 14 by wind, damaged five transformers, 20 pedestals, and replaced 1,900 feet of underground wire, and our workout, worked hours were about 1,500. So, with that said, I will hand it over to David Barth.
Good evening, David Barth with Development Services. As we transition from short-term recovery to long-term recovery, our department, Development Services, stands ready to work with homeowners on demolition and rebuilding their homes. If a damaged home is within the city limits, or if it's within a half-mile of the city limits, we would be glad to visit with, with property owners about the rebuilding process. Last Monday, our department worked quickly to streamline a process for three steps to demolish a structure that was affected by this fire. Our staff continues to look for challenges that are presented in our city code, so that when we permit and provide other services that were, you know, for reconstruction, this can be as smooth as possible for those property owners. Our immediate next steps, we have conference calls set up tomorrow with two communities in the United States that were, have also been devastated by wildfires, to visit with them about lessons learned, and so that we can be ready to facilitate rebuilding our community. Anyone who has questions about demolition or rebuilding their homes should contact our department. I would also add that the city also has a city webpage, that's stillourok.gov/wildfires, and we will continue to add resources to that page, whether it be for demo, the demo process is already there, but also for rebuilding code sections, anything that we're, we're looking at doing to, to help people make this as painless as possible. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Kristy Driscoll.
There are some things that we can't put numbers to. Dedication, professionalism, determination, and flat-out true grit. We saw all of this and more, and continue to do so. My awe and appreciation of our employees could not be stronger. I would like to take a moment, though, to expand on Chief Essery's stats that he provided. When we look at our police dispatch center, these are from 12 AM Friday morning till 11:59 Friday night. This only captures part of it, as the calls and calls for service continued well into Saturday morning. 354 calls for service were logged. There were 61 open calls for service at the peak of activity. There were 1,277 calls made or received through that dispatch center. This included over 366 wireless 911 calls, none that went unanswered. 11 voice-over-internet provider 911 calls, two text-to-911 calls, three landlined 911 calls. In addition to these 911 calls, they received over 658 on their business line, and they also have placed 236 outgoing calls to resources, agency partners, and to call-back citizens who had called in with concerns. So again, it was completely unprecedented, and actually hard for any of us to still comprehend. But it's a testament to our employees across many departments, which you've seen here tonight, and many others who have continued. Water Utilities, Public Works, Community Resources, Utility Billing, I think we could name almost every department across this organization, and they have had patience, grace, and continued efforts for this community, not only for this, but to continue business as normal for this community moving forward. I would also like to thank our other agencies and volunteers who have stepped up. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Jalowski, because there's something else that we can't quantify, and that's our community's hearts.
I'm going to try not to cry. I've been hanging out with the helpers in our community, and they've showed up in such huge ways. I'm always so proud to be a part of the Stillwater community, and this week even more so. I do want to spend some time updating you on all the resources that our community and nonprofit stakeholders have brought to bear this week. Our immediate community needs are being met through distribution of supplies at the Armory, the Red Cross at Payne County Expo Shelter, the helping agencies represented at the Multi-Agency Resource Center, or the MARC that Director Hill mentioned on Saturday, and our local community network. Over the course of the last week, our community members, and even those from outside of Stillwater, have donated food and supplies generously. We have had approximately 200 visits to the Stillwater Armory by those impacted by the fire. And they are from all facets of our community. Those that were living in trailers or campers, those that were living in family, single-family homes, and I think the people that have come to donate have represented those same, that same spectrum of people. It was remarkable that Saturday after the fires to see the constant steady stream of cars that were pulling up, and just the diversity of our community that was showing up to, to contribute and donate. I do want to update that the Red Cross let us know today that the shelter at the Payne County Expo closed as of 4:00 PM. All the residents that were there have worked with the shelter resident transition specialist, and they, to find their next living option, so that shelter is now closed as of 4:00 PM today. The Stillwater Armory will remain open for distribution of essentials to those impacted by the fires this week, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and Wednesday evening from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We are accepting specific donations as families transition into more long-term housing options. Their needs are starting to transition from food and personal care products to, there's a few specific things, new pillows and new pillowcases, iPhone chargers and phone charging blocks, gallon-sized Ziploc bags, canned meat, so chicken and tuna, ramen noodles, plastic tubs, and gift cards. Please continue to email thestillwaterstrongrelief@gmail.com with any needs that you have. Through this email, we have been able to support housing needs, specific clothing needs, household needs, mental health resources, and agency contacts. We've responded to 42 separate families throughout the last week, and followed up with 24 families through the Stillwater Public School Survey. We have also received over 600 emails offering to volunteer and donate. The United Way of Payne County has established a separate fund to collect monetary donations on behalf of our community at www.unitedwaypaincounty.org, and then search for the Stillwater Strong Relief. I think they have a button up there now. The money collected for the Stillwater Strong Relief Fund will be used for unmet needs for individuals impacted by the Payne County wildfires. After speaking with other communities and state agencies that have supported disaster recovery, the United Way of Payne County and relief organizers are developing a disaster allocation committee to oversee the transparent administration and equitable distribution of these funds. This committee will consist of 11 to 13 members that are representative across the community with different organizations and those impacted by the fires. We want the community and donors to know that every effort is being made in the process to ensure due diligence and to honor the donor's intent. I have seen deep grief and sadness in our community this last week, met with overwhelming love and support. Families that we have met with feel you wrapped around them big, Stillwater. Thank you. I have a long list of people. I've started a long list of people that deserve recognition and our thanks, but I wanted to just start with a few that mobilized very quickly on Saturday morning to organize relief efforts. I want to thank Carolyn Wallsted at SASSA for providing space in the Armory Gym and supporting community members as they came in for supplies. Our city staff, everyone here in this room, in this building, that, anyone that works for the city, I think, Kristy, you're right, everyone that has been staffing donation and distribution events and serving our community with such grace. Rachel Conley and her team at Our Daily Bread for organizing and responding to needs. The Alliance for Therapy Dogs and Grand Mental Health for attending distribution events and their compassionate care for our community and mental health. Ruth Cavins and United Way for providing a local and trusted platform for monetary donations. And Becky Taylor for stepping up to mobilize our initial team and organizing volunteers.
Counselors, do you have questions, comments, or thoughts that we need to share on this item?
I would just say, from the bottom of our hearts, the gratitude for the city employees, the Fire Department, the Emergency Management Group, the police, the dispatchers, Public Works, Electric Utility, Water Utility, Communications, Parks and Community Services, I mean, and the City Manager's Office, which I know they want to give everybody else credit, but they really stepped up as well. And I'm sure I'm forgetting people, but the task that was before our city last, that Friday, and how we responded, and how we have responded since then, has been such, I've never been prouder. So, thank you all to our, to our city, our employees, all of you all, and just to the community who have rolled out and so supported, bringing in donations, bringing in gift cards, monetary donations. Again, just have never been so proud to live in Stillwater.
This is who our community is, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's a giving and caring community. We step up when we need to. The staff have been exemplary in every possible way. I'm extraordinarily proud to be a leader in this community and, and, and see this reflected in who we are. I, I had a conversation with one of my clients who has mobility issues, and she was in the mandatory evacuation area, and police literally picked her up and took her out of the house to get her out of there. And that is, you know, again, it's who we are. So, thank you to everybody who has stepped up, whether you're a community member, whether you're a part of the staff. I am proud to be part of this organization.
One, one realization that I got from driving around Saturday morning, Oklahoma's tornadoes. And I've always thought about tornadoes being a disaster, and after a tornado, your stuff gets thrown around, but you might find it again. With a fire, there's nothing left. I mean, it's absolutely gone. And that was just a total new realization to me about what a disaster really looks like. Again, thank you to all city staff, all responders. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't have a ton to add here. I think we've, we've just got a lot of people in this community that are in, are in a tough situation through these, these disasters, and that, you know, as Vice Mayor said, the community has really, really stepped up to, to comfort them and to provide for them in ways that, you know, even though we sort of expect it here in Stillwater, it's still amazing to see firsthand, and, and can't say enough about it. You know, trying to thank one person in all of this makes it just impossible to, to figure out the whole list of people. I have a, a running note on my computer, just of people eventually that I've got to figure out ways to say thank you to in, in a way that's, that's meaningful. You know, you just, it's a huge list. A couple of, of things I want to just mention, there's a, a person that I really don't even personally know, named Edgar Escalante on Facebook, who was translating all of the posts into Spanish in real time and posting them, so that people who in, in the community needed to read in Spanish could see, could see those things. And that's something that just spontaneously they were doing. Just a, thank you. And so many other, I mean, just, there's so many stories that we've heard over the last week, week and a half, about folks who stepped up and did things and are doing things. This is, this is a long way to go from here. This is, there's a lot of, of work still to be done. I'm thankful to hear from staff about not only what happened, but where we're going and, and what we're going to do going forward to help folks, what we're going to do to make sure people are able to recover and to rebuild in, in whatever way they feel best. We're going to have a lot of conversations on council about this event and about what we can do to prepare our community better for things like this in the future. I know I, myself, you know, was evacuated on Friday, and when I got back home on Saturday, started looking at how my landscaping was arranged, and whether it was wildfire-resistant, and whether there were things that I need to be doing at my house that I think we, as a community, will be talking about a lot over the, the coming months and years, and, and I think we, as a council, will need to take an, an active leadership role in, in helping to, to, to see that our community becomes more resilient for, for a disaster like this. like this. So, again, echoing all these thanks, I will tell one quick story. I don't like to single people out, like I said, because there's so many other people, but we were at the mark on Saturday at First United Methodist Church, and they came, you know, to me towards the end of the day saying, hey, can you guys get somebody to come empty our trash can because it's full, it's overflowing? And it's four o'clock on Saturday, and I was like, well, I'll, I'll check. And, and the only person I was going to check with was the city manager, and so I texted him and said, hey, is this something we can do? He's like, well, you know, I'll just check. Next text I got from him is that he went down there himself, realized that it was mainly unbroken-down boxes in the trash can there at, at the church, and so he broke them down and got that dumpster down to about half-full so that they could continue to put trash in it on, you know, at 4:30 on a Saturday afternoon on his own. And that, I think, is certainly exemplary of, of Brady Moore's character, but also of the, the entire organization and, and an example of what has happened in this community over the last several days from so many, so many other people as well. So, thanks to everyone for, for the work that they've done, and, and we're, we'll be working together going from here to, to continue this recovery. Anything else to add? All right. Item nine, ordinances. On first reading, we have ordinance 3563 and ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 814, 816, 818, and 820 North Lincoln Street, 822 and 824 North Lincoln Street, 1102, 1104, 1106, 1108, and 1110 West Tyler Avenue from two-family and multifamily and two-family residential to two-family and multifamily. This is from the item earlier this evening.
Motion to advance ordinance number 3563 to second read.
Second.
With a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second read, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3563 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance 3561 and ordinance amending St. Louis City Code by amending Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 16, subdivision and preparation and requirements, Division Two, major subdivisions, Section 23-327, contents of the final plat, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Counselors?
I move to adopt ordinance 3561.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3561, please vote. Ordinance is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Will there be action on the emergency clause?
I move to treat ordinance 3561 as an emergency.
Second.
With a motion and a second on the emergency clause, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the emergency clause on ordinance 3561 is adopted. Item 10, appointments, Stillwater Housing Authority. The three-year term of Debbie Tiger expired in February, but she is willing to continue to serve on that board, and we certainly appreciate her service there. And so I will move that we reappoint Debbie Tiger to a new three-year term on the Stillwater Housing Authority expiring in February of 2028.
Second.
With a motion and a second on the appointment, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Debbie Tiger is appointed to a new three-year term on the Stillwater Housing Authority. Reports from officers in the board. Ms. Conley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Moore?
Yes. Before I have my standard talking point here, I would like to also just share a talking point. I shared this at Rotary last week when I was asked to kind of give an update on the fire situation, and one of the comments I made was just how blessed we are in this community, have the leadership that we have, and what I mean is our five elected officials. I was displaced right when this incident started happening. I was in St. Louis and realized quickly that I needed to get back home. And I quickly informed the council, and I was amazed at their response through the next, oh, 18 hours. It seemed like just absolutely two me and two staff sharing their ideas, their commitments. They were engaged in this situation, trying to care for our community, and from not only Vice Mayor quickly rallying the troops to get the response, but just giving us suggestions on how we could improve and get communications out. And I just, I'm, I'm grateful for our council, our elected officials, and their care for this community, and it showed in that intense 12-hour, 18-hour period. So, I just wanted to share that. And so now for my normal talking point, I will say that we have a citizen request tracker on our website for residents to report concerns regarding drainage and flooding, streetlight outages, trash collection issues, animal control requests, and much more. I will say this is actually a really cool tool on our website that we get a lot of great feedback in for our community that I highly recommend. If you see something that you just want to draw attention to the city, make sure they're aware of it, please use this citizen request tracker on our website. It goes immediately to distribute it to the departments that take care of those issues, and, and we, we try to, we, we pride ourselves in being a very responsive organization, and this tool has helped us be even more responsive. So, please use that. It's at stillwaterok.gov向report.
That's my favorite link to give out. I get lots of requests for things, oh, hey, do you know about this thing, or does somebody in the city do this? And I always tell them, stillwaterok.gov向report, go and make a note. Otherwise, you're relying on my memory to go remember to tell somebody about it, and that's not a good, not a good idea. Vice Mayor?
The annual Trash Off Event will be Saturday, March 29th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We ask that volunteers RSVP by March 27th so we can provide work gloves, safety vests, and trash bags. Volunteers will meet at the Couch Park Pavilion at 1270 East Alcott Drive. For more information or to RSVP, call Chris Franks at 405-533-8482, or email chris.frankx@stillwaterok.gov. This is an opportunity to earn community service hours if needed.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Hawkins?
Please mark your calendar for the annual Household Hazardous Waste Event on Saturday, April 26th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Convenience Collection Center. This is an opportunity to dispose of oil-based paint, pesticides, and herbicides, mixed fuels, and other hazardous materials for free. The Convenience Collection Center located 807, I'm sorry, 807 South Perkins Road will also be open for business as usual when this event occurs. Please visit the city's website for a full list of items that will be accepted.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
If you'd like to make a difference in our community, you may want to get involved with your local government by serving on a committee. These committees are essential for increased development and infrastructure projects within our community. We currently need to fill positions on the Board of Drainage Appeals and the Building Trades Board, and I'm betting there are probably some others too. For more information and to apply, go to stillwaterok.gov/citizenboards.
Thank you. Counselor Harden?
If you're looking for a way to reduce your water bill that is also environmentally friendly, you may want to purchase a rain barrel through City of Stillwater. Rain barrels capture water from your roof and store it for future use. This also helps reduce stormwater pollution by minimizing the amount of runoff that leaves the site. To order a rain barrel, go online to stillwaterok.gov/stormwater before April 28th.
And I would strongly encourage getting the overflow kit because you will be surprised how fast a 55-gallon drub fills up with water off your roof.
Excellent advice. I will remind you all to please remember to vote on April 1st. Election Day is April 1st. Early voting starts Thursday and Friday of this week. We will have a new proposition, we will have a proposition for a new animal welfare facility on the ballot for voters here in the city of Stillwater to consider. Animal welfare is an essential function of safety and emergency response efforts. Some of the services they provide include adoption and reunifications, population control through span neutering, removal of animals in public spaces and roadways, code enforcement, and much more. For more information about the proposed new facility with renderings and floor plans, go to stillwaterok.gov/animalwelfare. So, just, just as a, reiterate, early voting Thursday and Friday this week at the Payne County Administration Building or the, well, for this is going to be the Payne County Administration Building.
You can also vote in Cushing.
You can vote in Cushing.
Yes, this ballot will be in Cushing.
Okay. Good to know. If you're in Cushing during the day, you can vote down there on Thursday and Friday as well. And then Election Day is April 1st, that's your normal polling place. You can look up the Oklahoma Voter Tool on the Oklahoma election website and put in your address, or you put in your name and your birthday, I think, and it'll make sure you know exactly where your polling place is. But please, please remember to vote. Early voting Thursday and Friday, Election Day, Tuesday, April 1st. Questions or inquiries? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn Stillwater City Council, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. This time I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for March 24th, 2025. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
I move approval to consent.
No, pull item B.
All right.
I approve, I move approval item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item A from the consent docket, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, consent docket passes minus item B. Trustee Harden?
Yes, I just had some questions on item B about the status of the rebuild and the expense with rebuilds. I'll pass that along to Lauren Smith.
You bet. Thank you for the question. Again, trustees, Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. Your first question was kind of an overview of the project. This is the first major overhaul on our engines at the Energy Center. We're clocking in at about 22,000 hours. The project includes disassembling inspection down to the crankshaft. So basically, you're taking, disassembling the complete engine, shipping off various components to be rebuilt, taking lots of internal measurements, doing metallurgy tests on the crankshaft, you know, all, all kinds of very interesting tests. The overhaul plan was not fully developed when we went through the budgetary process for FY '25, so we didn't truly know the magnitude of what type of overtime we would be looking at. We did increase our, our overtime for FY '25, but certainly not enough, as we found out. And so, what we found out, there's a lot of throttling and pulling back on resources. During the project, we've had staff working seven days a week, 12 hours days, I mean, for weeks on end, so, and then you throttle back some when you realize you're either ahead or behind schedule. The project, we, we were, we were on time, we had a lot of, again, components that went out for rebuild. Those came back, the engine was assembled, we commissioned the unit for about eight hours and then determined we, we were having some exhaust leak leaking into our coolant. And so we have been feverishly trying to find the cause. We've relied on experts at Wortzilla, experts at MSHS who did our, our cylinder head work. After many, many hours and days of testing, we, we believe we have the solution. We, even Wortzilla's saying that, that we may have got a bad batch of seals with their overhaul kit that are causing us these delays. And so, those seals have been expedited from the Netherlands last week. They should be here tomorrow or the next day, and we'll be able to, to try them again and prove the theories, so.
So is this our staff that's doing the rebuild, or do you have Wortzilla people here too?
Yeah, so we're staffing this with all Stillwater personnel. We have a, we had Wortzilla come on-site to do some of the metallurgy testing on the crankshaft and the piston rods. And then Wortzilla came back and commissioned the unit where we ran it at various loads to seat the pistons in. And so, we're, we're very fortunate that we have an ex Wortzilla technician on staff. And so it's been very helpful for us to have that expert. And as a matter of fact, last week when we were talking with Wortzilla, you know, even the week before, send us somebody, send us somebody, we don't have anybody. You're lucky you got who you got because everybody's in the world, which I was amazed at. They've got, they just don't have the people, so.
So this is unit number one of how many?
This is unit one of three.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we're better prepared for number two and three, hopefully?
We're better, yeah, absolutely. You know, the first one's kind of the getting to know it, and then by the second, we'll be experts by the third one, let's put it that way. But no.
Then you can sell your time somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve item B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B from the consent docket, please vote. Items approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Lauren. Takes us down to general orders. Item 5A is approved amendment number two for a fee of $574,446 for the West College Sewer Project. Chris Humes is here to tell us more.
All right. Good evening, trustees. Chris Humes here tonight to present contract amendment number two for the West College Sewer Rehab Project. So the, the project really focuses on rehabbing of sewer lines and manholes in Westwood and the Greek housing areas, and rehabbing of manholes around, around town. The project's currently 90% complete, and then a third of the easements have been obtained. And so really what we need to do is just finish the design, get to 100%, obtain the remaining easements, and then go out for bid for the, for the work, construction work.
So when you say projects 90%, you mean the design's 90% complete?
Correct, yeah. So the, kind of the confines of this project are really from King Street over to Jefferson, and then from University down to Sixth Street. There's a small little piece over there off of Eiler, and then also there's a aerial crossing through a, on the Willis Street area, and then also there's a sewer that needs to be repaired where it crosses under Sixth Street out there at Country Club. And then also, the, also as part of this project's evaluation and rehab of 85 manholes around town as, as well. So, so the, the solution here, the proposal here is to complete the design, obtain the remaining easements that we need. We're about a third done, so we need about two-thirds left. Bid out the work and then start construction this time next year. And then funds for the design acquisition easement are available in the sewer fund, and then construction funding will include a $5 million congressional directive from Senator Anheuser. And so with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Trustees?
So I gave you, I alerted you to a question beforehand. This is a big jump in, in the original costs, so explain that to me, please.
Sure, yeah. No, that's a fair question, Tim. So the, if you go back when this project was, they conceptualized doing it five years ago, the, they had estimates to do the acquisition of easements that were anywhere from about $330,000 up to about $800,000. So that was considered to be a big number, and it is a big number. And so the thought was, well, let's do that in-house with, with our own employees. Well, five years later, we've got about a third of those acquired, and so the biggest part of this, about 70% of those dollars you see there are for third-party acquisition of these easements. We got to go out and do survey work, we got to go back and recheck, some things have changed over there. We've built sorority houses, fraternity house over there. People have bought pots, they've split them up, built two houses on it, people have added on to houses. So things have changed during that time, so we need to go out there and check those. So that's really 70% of it. And then the rest of it is during that time RJN's fees have gone up, we've added on to the scope, so there's that sewer line that goes under Sixth Street that we're going to have to replace that, so that's part of it. And so that, that's really kind of the lion's share of those, of those dollars.
So some of this is also related to the Highway 51 reconstruction, I'm assuming? You mentioned six.
No, not that. So the, the part I meant under Sixth Street is way out there on the west side of town on, or Country Club. There's a, there's casing where it goes under Sixth Street, and the last time we video camered it, there's actually a hole in the sewer pipe where it's in the casing, and so we need to go and replace that crossing, and so that's what that is, so.
Trustees, further questions? Or action on the item? Or actually, I guess we need a recommendation, don't we?
Yes, sir. So, staff recommendations, a motion to approve CA 2 for a fee of $574,446 for the West College Sewer Project. Authorized General Manager to execute CA 2 and related documents. Authorized total project expenditures of 1.838900, which includes design, land acquisition services, permitting, bidding, construction, administration services, land acquisition purchases, contingency, and previous project authorizations. And then lastly, approve the related budget amendment.
Just to clarify, the CA 2 is contract amendment number two, correct, Chris?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Trustees?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, staff's recommendation is approved. Reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn the SUA?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.